Four o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order.
We're all here.
We could do a roll call, that would be great.
Certainly, Councilmember Palito.
Here.
Hawkins.
She just stepped out of the room.
She's she's got her camera up.
Okay, great. Louis?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Whitmer?
I'm still here.
Thank you, and Mayor DeGolia.
I guess I'm still here, too.
I'm glad you're here, Anthony.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Or items that are on the agenda?
I don't see anybody with hands.
Anyone indicating that, so. Let's move on to the first item, which is a discussion of the municipal code relative to landscape screening.
Hey, Stephanie.
I assume Stephanie is taking that on.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that would be me, Stephanie Davis, Principal Planner. Good afternoon, Council. So staff is asking for some direction on possible amendments to the town's landscape screening ordinance. And so this topic was presented to you back in January of last year, related to some concerns that had been expressed, both by staff and community members that were related to the ability for detached buildings and structures that were situated or are situated on hillside lots and the ability to adequately screen those buildings and structures from downhill neighbors due to the varied topography. So the council at that time did refer the item to the planning commission for further evaluation. And following that meeting, the Town Arborist did bring to our attention some additional topics of concern also related to the landscape screening ordinance, specific to minimum planting sizes and types of plantings related to the screening of detached accessory dwelling units, which ordinance also had gotten adopted post-council discussion and as we're aware, have the ability to be situated only four feet from a side or rear property line, as well as the ability for what we call tower elements or vertical projections or pop-ups, so to speak, on main residences. And so because there are additional topics, we are bringing this back and looking for some additional council direction on on the topic. So these four topics, I'll just go over quite briefly, starting with the first, is that what you had already somewhat discussed back in January related to hillside screening? So the town's current ordinance does not nor does nor does the requirements for a landscape screening plan have any specificity or distinction of requirements for landscape screening relative to a flat lot versus a lot on a hillside. So in reviewing the proposed landscape plans, the Town Arborist is not made aware or is informed that any associated buildings may necessarily be situated uphill and or downhill from any adjacent neighbor. So potential recommended approach that we're looking for some direction on to address this issue would be to consider requiring landscape plans to calculate and define the property's slope, and subsequently revise the language in the landscape screening ordinance that would require larger and greater quantities of trees and or shrubs to help mitigate that that aesthetic of the building that may appear taller to a downhill neighbor, even though it may meet the town's maximum height guidelines. So a recommended slope percentage that's been included in the staff report was proposed at nineteen point nine percent, and that percentage was derived from existing town regulations relative to subdivision standards as a potential defining criteria. Basically, the subdivision ordinance requires any lot with a slope of greater than nineteen point nine percent to be bigger, wider, and deeper. I did do a little bit of research on what other jurisdictions within San Mateo and Santa Clara County specifically that have defined like hillside overlay districts, like a separate zoning district, and how they define such hillside lots. Those are always by percentages, and such percentages I found have varied somewhere between fifteen to twenty percent, just for reference. So moving on to the three additional, we'll call newer topics that have been posed by our town arborist. The first having to do with the existing ordinance language that requires a minimum of only fifteen gallon shrub size as part of a landscape screening plan. So our town arborist has noted that almost always she has to require larger and more plantings than, excuse me, an initial landscape screening plan originally proposes in order to make a determination of adequate screening. So the subsequent staff recommendation, excuse me, that we are looking for direction on is to increase this minimum size to twenty-four inch box-sized shrubs to be more consistent with what the town arborist appears to be predominantly requiring under current practice. The the fact is that shrubs, per her professional opinion, do tend to grow both faster and can be planted more compactly. And so as such, she's also not recommending that the ordinance integrate any language changes to prepare a specific list of shrubs or trees. The concern there is the potential issue for pest or disease issues if there was only a few species planted throughout town that could effectively be wiped out if there was any kind of pest or disease outbreak. But rather recommending some encouraging language that integrated native and or drought-resistant plants and or trees be integrated into a landscape plan. Lastly, we, yeah?
Rick, through the mayor, excuse me, can I interrupt? Are we going to have a chance to kind of address each of these individually? You know, her comments? I think she said she has four points, yeah, and or are we going to try to do that all at the end?
I think I think it's fine to take them one at a time. Have you have you finished with the hillside screening, Stephanie?
Yes, so I'm happy to answer any questions. I can pause.
I I I would guess that Elizabeth has a question.
Well, I do. Well, I have a question or a comment on both of those.
Well, let's first take questions.
Yeah.
See, Bill has a question.
Questions. So I guess if we can roll it back to the hillside screening, the slope I have a question about, because they've she's determined that it's the nineteen point nine percent slope would be a trigger point. And that the survey from other districts was ranged from about fifteen percent up to maybe twenty percent. So my question would be, would a lower percentage be a more effective qualifier in screening of the hillside slope?
Great, good question.
I think the lower the the lower the percentage, the greater amount of properties would be captured under any potential regulation change.
Okay, so that's that's my question. I'll reserve my comment later.
And and Bill, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I got comments later, just like Elizabeth. However, on the, you said there wasn't going to be any recommendation on shrubs or or trees that are planted, so in the in the tree ordinance, we recommend against several types of trees. And I think that you should refer to that tree ordinance and and what paragraph we said we don't want to have, for example, eucalyptus trees and things like that. I I don't think we should have people planting things that we've said in the tree ordinance we don't want. And so what is there a reason that we didn't refer to that?
Great, that's the question. Is there a reason we didn't refer to those trees that are discouraged or in fact some?
Yes, so the there is a list of disfavored as they are defined in the heritage tree ordinance trees. And the reason that those weren't included is just upon conference with the Town Arborist to reuse and implements the landscape screening plans. She's finding that folks are really not ever proposing any of those trees within those plans. But if that was the council's direction, we could certainly integrate that into any ordinance language.
Okay, great. More questions. Diana?
Sorry, you're recommending that we go from twenty-five gallon to twenty-four. Is there also a height requirement? Because it seems as though the the operative thing is the height requirement, that you're planting things that are tall enough. I have two questions, so that's one of them.
So the the recommendation is to increase the size from a fifteen gallon to a twenty-four inch box. And I think the heights will vary depending on the species of the shrub and or tree. Sally, maybe you could speak a little bit more to that point.
Yeah, so it would be harder to measure that, especially out in the field, once it's planted. I don't think we really want to do that. And Stephanie is right, every species is going to have a difference in height. So for a twenty-four inch box, they're typically eight to fifteen feet tall when planted. But I mean, that's a difference between eight and fifteen feet.
Depending you're looking for is the speed of growth, right?
Yeah, the speed of growth. So when somebody applies and in their, I don't have an example right now, but if they want to plant something that's extremely slow growing like ginkgos, well, that's not going to be good screening. So I do look at the species when they submit the plan. But there's usually typically just a handful of species that landscape architects suggest, and they're all pretty fast growing.
But they don't have a height requirement in order to act, because the goal here is screening, so it should be tall enough to block things that are within sight. Second question. I'm sorry?
Within five years, a five-year timeframe.
Yeah, I understand the timeframe, but I'm curious about there there not being a requirement. When you're talking about a thing on a slope and you're giving different requirements for things on a slope, is there an actual calculation that says if your slope is, you know, twenty-five degrees, that your thing needs to be tall enough to cover? Do you follow what I'm saying? If you're not going by height, you're not getting it, you're not requiring it to be a certain height to block line of sight, which to me is doesn't make sense anyway, because you're trying to block sight. When you're on a hill, you could probably do a mathematical equation of the curve, so you can say, all right, on a hill, you have to have x amount taller in order to create create the same screenage. So you you guys are just saying if it's on a slope, there's different rules and can what is the difference? And how do how does the percentage play into it? How are you calculating that?
Right, so that's one of the topics that we're looking for some council direction on. Current the current ordinance language does not have any distinction in recommended size or species or types of plants and or shrubs and or trees to be planted on a hillside slope. There's no distinction between a flat lot, landscape screening plants, landscape screening plan, or a slope lot landscape screening plan. And so the 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 recommendation, at least for an initial approach, to address the concerns is for larger and faster-growing type of species that would help mitigate that what appears to be a taller building from a downsloped neighbor.
Is there a way to calculate that? You know what I'm saying? If you've got an angle, let's say you wanted a normal screen planting to be minimum six feet tall, but now they're at an angle, so then we should be able to do the math to figure out how tall that tree should be to do the same six-foot coverage based on the slope. There's there's some math guys here. I think there's a math professor here who might be able to.
There is a formula for it. I'd I'd have to work it out, but there is a formula for it.
Well, I think I'm just going to answer your question, because I think that they in the report, there is kind of a cross, you know, crossways formula that she does talk about, right?
But the issue is that different shrubs or trees grow at different rates. So it's not an issue of height, it's an issue of size. And based on the size of the plant or the tree, as someone who knows that plant or tree like Sally, can tell approximately how fast it's going to grow based on the soil quality and the care that's given. And so things grow at different rates. The the issue is the size of the plant. Bob, you have a question?
Actually, two. The first one is, before we spend two hours on this topic, I'm curious how many lots fall into this hillside scenario. I I I don't think it's a lot.
Stephanie answered that.
Thank you, through the mayor. So without going in and analyzing the slope for each potential lot in town, we did guesstimate that any lot that has any slope topography within town would be west of Alameda de Los Pogos. Not necessarily every lot west of Alameda de Los Pogos would hit the defined potential future defined slope criteria, but there are approximately three hundred parcels west of Alameda de Los Pogos in town. But it is assumed not every single parcel of those three hundred would necessarily be that steeply sloped. Obviously, the further west you go, the steeper they get.
Do you have an estimate on how many are nineteen point nine percent or more?
I I don't, I don't. I would say you you go at least about a quarter of a mile up from Alameda, perhaps less, you're starting to hit steeper topographies.
Hey, Bob, you had a second question?
Yeah, so so I mean, in in theory, you're talking about roughly ten to fifteen percent of the number of lots in town. So Sally, with with what we've done up to this point with making no changes, it sounds like there's some give and take between you and the homeowner. When you don't like their 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 plan, you tell them to fix it. And and typically, they fix it?
I mean, they they have to fix it to get approved. I think the issue is is they go back to the ordinance, and they're like, with the ordinance, says I can plant fifteen gallon shrubs. And also, I'm I don't always know every site. I mean, usually I visit it, but sometimes I don't. And sometimes I miss that the the site is on a slope, because they don't disclose that on the plans. And so there was a a site that was on Sargent, and it was missed, and they they built a structure, a necessary structure. And then after the fact that I had proved the plans, it was brought to my attention that the down the downslope neighbor was not happy. So they met the minimum for the ordinance, but you know, I wasn't aware that it was a slope.
No, I I I understand that. I guess what I'm getting at is there's enough houses that this is going to be an issue, and when we should get into ADUs, it's really going to get to be an issue. But I'm I'm finding it hard to believe that we're going to be able to codify this and solve, make the problems go away. It it's going to have to be, there's going to have to be a judgment factor in there that relies on some common sense and some, you know, your good judgment. So I I'm not, I'm not sure that whether the the slope is nineteen nine or 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 fifteen two, that you're going to be able to codify this and get get a satisfactory result.
Well, you know.
Well, let's just finish the questions. Bill, do you have a question?
Yeah, one of the things that several residents have been brought have brought up is also the downlighting. So when something's on the side of the hill, the downlighting can be, you know, amplified. So did you consider that? Or or could that be considered in in this ordinance?
I I think it certainly could. I with down with lighting on detached accessory buildings, there's an associated regulation that requires such lighting to be shielded and downlit. And if the proposed landscaping plan, if the intent is to screen the building itself, which can go up to fifteen feet or sixteen feet for an ADU, that lighting should not be any taller than nine feet. And so it was thought that any increased screening mitigation would effectively cover any lighting on a detached building or structure.
You know, I I would I would have, you know, suggested that you have have consideration for not having it on the downslope side. But I think I think that's that has been a complaint.
Okay, George has a question.
Actually, it's just a a point of clarification. So as Councilmember Lewis noted, property owners have five years to provide the adequate screening once their property project is approved and completed.
I'm just gonna wait. It's no in her, which I thought was really good. It's upon the issuance of the permit. Approved, not when the construction is done, but from the date of the permit. You know, so they've got two years of construction or three years of construction, and those things need to be going in like early on in order to have, or you have to put big ones in that, you know, in two years or whatever.
Right, yeah. So so the date of that is when that starts is the date of the permit, but it's five years. And so what Sally or the town arborist is looking at is, as as the mayor indicated, the size of the plant at the time that it goes in and the type of growth speed. So it's not going to be the height of the plant when they put it in. It's going to be the type of plant, how fast growing it is, and what size box or or plant they actually put in there. And to Councilmember Palito's point, the arborist has a lot of discretion when evaluating these plans to upsize or change the types of vegetation that's going in there in order to meet that requirement.
But I think the arborist needs a little bit more help in the written ordinance, because a resident building a brand-new house is going to do, if they can, just the minimum. And a fifteen gallon plant shrub is a lot less expensive than a twenty-four inch box.
We're giving comments, I'll take public comment. Is there any public comment?
Mayor DeGolia may make a comment briefly before we move into public comment.
Go ahead.
So I understand that there's a desire not to perhaps, or maybe there is, I'm not sure. There was a discussion about whether we should have the allowed prohibited species in these ordinance. But setting that aside, we do need to establish, and we need some policy direction from the council on parameters so that the arborist does not have unbridled discretion. That is unenforceable. We won't be able to establish it. Residents need to be able to see our ordinance and know objectively what would be allowed versus what would not be allowed. And so it could be something like, you know, fifteen versus twenty-five gallons that grow at the rate of X feet per year. But but we need something in there so that we can objectively measure against it. And it's not just one staff person's ideas of what works and what doesn't.
So I've got a couple of questions. One question is, Stephanie, I I think it would be helpful to us to have a sense of how many houses would fall into the nineteen point nine percent versus the fifteen percent criteria. I have no judgment on how significant that five percent is. So I I know that there was a question on that at the very beginning, but I I I didn't feel like that was really answered. And it would be helpful to understand that, because we have heard over the years about problems with downslope people not having the upsloped accessory building screened. And 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 I think, you know, I'll comment on that later, but I I'd like to understand and have some judgment on percentages and and just adopting nineteen point nine percent because it's more restricted than fifteen percent doesn't help me.
I watched some of it with you.
Oh, it it it's more restrictive. It reduces the number of houses that would be subject to a change in the ordinance if we use nineteen percent than if we used fifteen percent. But I don't understand what the significance is and 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 what the the issue would be, how many houses that might affect.
I hear, thank you, Mayor. I hear the the direction. I have to think through a bit on the means of calculating that. Could be a bit challenging without having, I had to find a means of topographic maps for all of those three hundred approximate parcels west of Alameda.
May maybe the question then is, why why did we choose nineteen point nine percent in the ordinance now versus twenty-five percent or fifteen percent or twelve and a half percent? How how is it that we came up with nineteen point nine?
So the nineteen point nine was just a starting point for conversation as a recommendation. And that was extrapolated from the town's existing subdivision ordinance. And I think the nineteen point nine is it's a pretty steep slope. And the intent behind having the slope percentage define a lot's size and area, basically, the steeper you are, the bigger you are, is to help mitigate impacts on future development from adjacent neighbors. You'd have bigger setbacks, you'd have other zoning requirements that would come into play on a steeper lot as it relates to development of the house. So it was a carryover just again, as a starting point for conversation for the council to consider, because it's already vetted within other another town adopted ordinance. But as I mentioned, going off, some jurisdictions do have separate zoning districts that overlay on top of their base, you know, single-family, multifamily, et cetera, usually called hillside overlay districts. And what I found is mostly those percentages fall within the range of fifteen to twenty percent. I think that fifteen percent really is a distinct visual change in in the hillside, where you can notice the difference in topography.
So I just want to really be clear, we do currently do not have that nineteen point nine percent in our ordinance.
Not in the screening ordinance, it's in the subdivision ordinance.
Right, in this, right, just just, yeah. So Stephanie's, and that's why I asked, you know.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Okay, so my second question is this. The ordinance that we have that is longstanding provides that a homeowner has to screen their their building, usually it's an accessory building, but it could be a main house building from the date that they obtain the permit for the main house. And that was done at a time, I'm sure, that houses were built in the one-to-two-year period rather than the two-to-three-year period. And I wonder, from your perspective, how you think the fact that houses are being built longer now, it it obviously means if we retain the five-year period, that 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 screened material will be planted later than it would have been planted previously. So it probably will take longer to provide the screening benefit that it had done fifteen or twenty years ago when houses were smaller. And and I wonder if you've considered whether that should be changed and what you think about that.
Sally, I'd like Sally to provide a little bit of opinion on that, since she's really implementing the plans and seeing when a landscape screening plan is coming in relative to when the building permit for the main house has been submitted.
So typically, a screening plan comes in at frame. So that could be a year or two after the start of project. And so I'm approving something at that time period, but technically, they can build for another two years or even another year or so if they go over their time limit. And so that means that things could change, because I don't know when they're gonna, when they're gonna find all their building. And then if I'm approving a twenty-four inch box, but they're not planting the screening until five years, some projects go for five years, then that's a problem. So a lot of sites also don't plant until the end of the project, because they don't want to install irrigation, they don't want the trees, the shrubs to die. And so.
That makes sense. Look at our town center project.
Right. So it's hard to say when I when I think a site's going to find out, when I'm approving their plan at the frame of the building. So so that's why I think it's important to have in the ordinance, at least some language that makes the the shrubs be larger than the fifteen.
Yes.
Okay. Clear penalties for not achieving that.
So if if anyone has any other questions, we can interlace them with comments. There was there wasn't any public comment, so we can take comments from members of the council, or if there's members of the public that wish to make a comment. This is sort of a free-range discussion. Diana, and then Elizabeth. You're muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. So we currently have no language about, all right, so let me back up. I'm very much in favor of the bigger-sized pots. I would like, personally would like to see language that what Bill was saying about putting the language in on things that we don't want to have planted, so that reiterates stuff we've already put in the thing. And I personally would like to see language actually says that the plants that you're planting upon maturity would be a minimum height. So you know that a certain species would grow to be as a height. So you want to So you want to make sure that they're least picking things. If you, if the goal is screening, they should be a certain height. And I also like this, the hill slope idea. I'm not totally sure how I would implement that. But I would also try to come up with some sort of formula that says based on the grade, that's how much bigger they have to be. So the more you can quantify it, the easier Sally's job's gonna be.
Right, okay. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Are we gonna talk about the four foot space from ADUs later?
So, so I um, I agree with everything that uh, council member Hawkins, Manleyan said. I was gonna reiterate that. Um, the twenty-four inch box size, I think no matter what. It, I think that needs to start soon, uh, as soon as possible. Um, and uh, it just becomes part of the, the construction cost. So the, the non uh, native plantings, I have concerns, a, a lot of concerns about uh, plantings all over town that are maybe non-native, uh, that they may uh, you know, breed um, pests and other kinds of things. I think drought tolerant and uh, I don't know that in, English laurels are necessarily drought tolerant, but that's certainly a popular um, shrub and pitasphorums, but uh, and they grow very tall. See?
I don't think they're native.
And I don't think they're native either, right? Uh, but it would be interesting to know. Um, but there certainly are a lot of them, but uh, they do grow tall and, and quickly. And they're easily hedged. Um, the um, the thing that we were talking about, the slope. Um, so my mind, I'm not a math uh, major. Uh, but it would seem to me that a lower percentage slope would give us uh, the ability to, 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 to require more screening earlier on than a higher percentage slope. Cause it would, so I, um, and what that percentage is, I don't have an opinion on, but uh, Stephanie did say some other cities go from a range of fifteen percent up to twenty percent. And I don't have a sense, an opinion on that, but I think that should be researched more.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, um, so I, I agree with, with the comment that Elizabeth made on the drought tolerance. Uh, California native species, I think we should be requiring that. I would like to see the reference on the types of trees we want not. I would like some consideration on the, on, on the down lighting. And I think, I think twenty percent, looking at it, of course, a lot of it depends on the length. You know, how far away the top of the house, the tree or the, the, the hill is. But um, I think, you know, twenty percent is, is too high. Nineteen point nine is too high, looking at, looking at different angles on a protractor. But as I said, it, it depends on how, how long the, the line is going. Cause it gains five percent every foot, five percent additional every foot.
Hey, thanks. So I, I'll make a couple of comments. Um, I, I agree with what's been said, it seems more reasonable to me and, and other jurisdictions do it to use fifteen percent than nineteen point nine. I do think we should require in the ordinance that the slope information is provided uh, when the screening plan is being worked on. So I think it should be required, so Sally doesn't have to guess. And perhaps miss it like, like occurred on sergeant. I don't think that's her fault. I think that the ordinance should help her out by requiring the statement of the slope. Uh, I think that the twen- twenty-four inch box should be the standard rather than fifteen gallon. Uh, twenty-four inch boxes are, are readily available. Uh, I, I've had two houses built next to me and there's a huge difference between those plants. I know when I built mine, I used twenty-four inch boxes and I got great screen, I wanted the screening. So I wanted twenty-four inch boxes and I got great screening very quickly. Uh, I think that I, I, well, we can't give unlimited discretion whi- which I understand. Uh, I think we could say that uh, the uh, Arbors, the town Arbors could have discretion to require thirty-six inch boxes where necessary. That's not unlimited discretion, that's specified discretion. And I'd like to enable that. Um, I uh, I think that we shouldn't be as worried as I was initially and is easy to do about the five year issue. Because the real issue isn't the time period from when someone gets the permit to begin building their main residence. The real issue is how the screening will do once the plant material has gone in. And uh, and we don't want the plant material to go in until uh, the main work is, you know, close to being done or else the landscaping is going to be damaged. So uh, that just needs to be managed and in, and I'd like uh, in I, I understand this is going next to the planning commission, but I'd like the planning staff to think about whether there should be a recommendation on uh, the timing. Uh, we, we all want the same thing, is we want full screening of the property, of, of the buildings. And I, I just don't have great perspective, but things have changed because building is going so long. Uh, I, I guess the final thing I'd say is um, I, I, I'm not sure how to put it in so that it's properly controlled discretion, but I think there is an issue with downslo- slope properties uh, that we need to give the Arbors the ability to uh, evaluate it uh, in, in the course of accepting the plan. Um, I don't have anything else to say. Are there any other comments? Okay, well, uh, let's move on then. I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie, but I think we've addressed items one and two. Which is the hillside and the specificity of planning type, species and sizes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And the, the other two items, and maybe you could take them together, are accessory dwellings and towers.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I was gonna make a comment, I think some of the direction that I just heard could potentially be appropriately um, integrated into these two remaining topics. So I'll just highlight them briefly um, and take any further direction that, that, that the council may have specific to these um, areas. So the third being the um, challenges that uh, the town staff has been facing and implementing the landscape screening ordinance relative to de- uh, accessory dwelling units, whether they're detached or attached. Albeit at this point, um, we've only seen detached accessory dwelling units proposed four foot side and or rear setbacks again as uh, uh, allowed by state law. And so the obvious challenge there is the minimum physical amount of space between the building and, and what's usually a fence, with only four feet. Um, and, and what can be planted within that area. And so um, in discussing the implementation of landscaping plans with the town Arbors, um, it is recommended that some objective standards do be added to landscape screening relative to accessory dwelling units proposing a four foot side or rear setback at a minimum twenty-four inch box size. So that leaves two feet of a box around and a little bit of buffer between uh, the fence and the building. Um, anything larger, there's concern that it could cause damage in the future, again depending on the species planted either at the, the shared fence with the neighbor or the building itself on the property. And then the last topic also has to do um, with um, screening or mass, a screening of mass or building and related to um, what we call architectural projections or towers on main residences. Um, you'll see that um, perhaps throughout town and they're, they're limited in square footage, it can't be the whole house and it can't be on all four sides of the house. But um, it, it's a pop-up so to speak, that comes up a bit taller than the standard allowable either sidewall or maximum height of a main residence. Um, and there has been some concern expressed that a standard uh, landscape screening plan doesn't necessarily uh, specifically address this more finite element of the main house. And so the recommendation is that any plan that would um, or has obtained such architectural approval for that type of design approach may have additional landscape screening requirements specific to that, what, what I'm gonna call this tower or architectural vertical projection element. So keep the standard recommended landscape screening language, but add an additional layer of requirements specifically addressing that tower or vertical projection element. And, and with that, I had nothing um, remaining to, to present to the council, but again, always happy to answer any questions, um, any additional direction.
Great. Okay, thank you. Questions? Elizabeth and then Bill.
Thank you. So Stephanie, um, thank you very much for that report. Uh, in your um, staff report, you were talking about how to um, require uh, to, to screen the towers. Um, planting kind of closer to the structure itself to then uh, and, and that, we currently don't have that in our ordinance, right?
That's correct. There's, there's no landscape screening requirement specific to a plan that implements the tower element.
Yeah, that's, I thought that was very good. Then the other question I had for Sally is in the four foot uh, side planting area between a fence and an ADU or, you know, a structure wall. What can be planted there that number one will grow tall? I, and with, with potentially no light, uh, because you're squeezed between these two uh, vertical uh, sides, I guess the, the fence is only what, nine feet tall, eight feet tall? I don't know.
I, I think it's gonna be difficult because uh, the spread of a shrub or even a tree, uh, it's gonna cause, I think, issues with the property line. Um, and also with the structure. If you're planting trees there, then that's not a good idea because um, the trunk will be too close to the structure.
Right.
Um, um.
So is there any consideration given uh, to uh, make that side fence against that side building that's only four feet away? Uh, taller, maybe with a um, a see-through, you know, like the see-through lattice, but I mean, there could be other designs uh, of a, a, a cool fence uh, that opens it up. Um, but, you know, make it nine or ten feet tall for, from the six foot, you know, so that you have more of a uh, see-through instead of planting. So that.
Yeah, currently um, we don't allow that in the ordinance, a good neighbor fence has to be six feet tall.
Yeah.
It's definitely something to consider as more ADUs will be built. Um, or I think it's just gonna have to be more creative with vines or something to at least at least screen the building. If there's no windows or if you could at least camouflage a building somewhat.
Oh, people don't want to put vines on buildings.
Yeah, and Stephanie's report, it says that it's, you, we just have to do our best because we do have to allow for ADUs.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess considering a taller fence at, at building site and then, you know, you can step it down.
Okay, Bob?
Well, just, I, I don't, I don't have the landscaping expertise that you and Elizabeth have, but I've done twenty houses in the last ten years and with the, with the goal, I, I had to land, you know, I'm, I'm telling them where to put thing, what to buy and where to put them. And with the goal of doing a lot of screening in a hurry because we're, we're building these houses as small lots. So back to your question, what you can put in a four foot space is really gonna actually provide any screening. Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything except like an Italian cypress. And, and buying a twenty-four inch one is not easy, but possible. But again, it, it would be back to how close together you put them, et cetera. A taller fence with vines on it
Yeah.
might be a, a much more uh, practical solution. Um, because depending upon the sunlight, there's a lot of choices for the vines. And we could modify the code, I presume, to a lot bigger fences, but when you get, you start trying to the, the other thing we, that maybe we can do, I, I don't know, but maybe we can restrict the heights more rigorously on these uh, accessory buildings and uh, ADUs. Whatever the accessory building is, if we can keep that height down, the problem is uh, maybe more manageable.
Yeah.
The state ordinance is sixteen feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can't touch that?
Not the state ordinance.
No.
Uh, George, you wanna say something?
Uh, just a note, we don't know exactly where our fire district is going with this, but there is something in the, you know, the state Cal Fire Standards related to, I think it's called uh, defensible space around a structure. So that four feet may be part of that defensible space. I know where I live in Marin County, uh, we can't plant anything within three feet of the house. Uh, or habit, or habitable structure. So it might be something worthwhile integrating between these two and to think about, think about landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cur- the current distance is five and the, and the documents that they pass out, it's five feet.
Which is, which is huge.
Yeah.
I mean.
They want a non-vertible space of five feet around, around all the structures. So they're suggesting either decompose granite or even cement or, or, or uh, you know, who knows?
That would prevent screening altogether.
Rocks, yeah, right.
Don't have any building.
No, oh, okay.
Okay, um. Well, I was gonna say, I, rather than recommend, I'd, I'd prefer to require the twenty-four inch boxes, but maybe we need some more discussion on this. Uh, I, I do think pitasphorum would uh, I, I've got pitasphorum that I have for screening in between two fences that's less than four feet and it does fine. It's also twenty years old and it provides lots of screening. Uh, but uh, I, I, I think that there's plant material that can go into a four foot space. Wha- whether it provides really good screening or not, I don't know. Certainly Italian cypruses could do it, but they're not that great screening. You have to have them awfully close together to provide any screening.
Those, those forms need to be trimmed, you're gonna have to cut them back.
Yeah.
I, I, maybe, maybe we should consider allowing up to ten foot fences for uh, for these four foot setbacks for ADUs. Uh, I would say that if we are going to allow a ten foot fence for the set, for where there's a four foot setback from an ADU, there may well be other instances in town where we want to look at the fence height issue. Because I know it's been raised to me uh, by at least one resident about wanting higher height of, next to a school. And right now we don't have that. Elizabeth?
Okay, so, so my, my comment a- about that would be that I would really advocate uh, if we do like a ten foot fence, that it would not be a solid uh, wall up ten feet. There are ways to create your six foot or maybe seven foot solid piece. And then um, you know, with slats and some other kind of uh, uh, sep- light separation going the other three to four feet uh, to essentially screen it. Um, you know, the easiest, but it's, it's kinda tacky looking. I can't imagine that a lot of Atherton residents would want just the you know, Home Depot uh, woven look of the redwood uh, you know, addition there. This, so, you know, they could have some um, architectural license, you know, freedom to create that. And I wouldn't think that you'd want it the entire length of your um, of your property, but maybe just where it's so tight. Because then you could, if it's going down the, the uh, border, the perimeter of your property, you would have more opportunity to plant, you know, shrubberies or landscape screening uh, to soften that. So, I mean, that, that, the devil's in the details there.
Okay, Bill?
Sure, um, I think ten feet is a little bit too high, but um, I, as, a, a, an alternate suggestion might be that if somebody plants, does something four feet from there and they can't find a way to screen it. that if somebody plants, does something four feet from there and they can't find a way to screen it, that the neighbor could screen it on their side if they had the space and agree what they're going to plant. And of course, the expense would be covered by the the other neighbor that was that has the facility. So anyway, it's just an idea.
Yeah, that is a good.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, Stephanie, I think you should look at that and bring it up to the planning commission. I think that's a very good idea because there's plenty of room on that side. It obviously creates a situation where you've got to get neighbors to agree, which we don't want to have to do. But it might not be a bad thing to do.
It'd be a good thing. And that's all my that's all my comments on that.
Okay, I I I think it would be a good idea to put into the ordinance that where there's a tower, that the tower needs to be screened and it doesn't have to be screened at the property line. I I I think that should be an addition because I can understand how people who face those towers without any screening would be unhappy. Okay, I I think we can move on to the next item. The next item is a receive and file item. This is the mid-year budget discussion.
This one's going over to Mr. Barone.
Yeah, thanks, George. Hi, Mayor, Council members of the public. Item number five is the receiving file, the mid-year budget report for 2021, 21, 22 fiscal year. Revenues are, the 21 budget reflects town's positive financial outlook while maintaining the city council priorities. The revenues are expected to exceed projections for fiscal year by 2.1 million. There is a basic total revenue increase of 926,000 and an increase of 1.179 million in excess ERAF revenue. Secure property tax had an increase of 215,000 to 10.5 million. And the overall total property tax category that will show an increase, a projection by 533,000. Let me give staff of, let me give the council a review, update on the property tax VLO. Brief update in fiscal year 2021, recall, there was a shortfall countywide in the amount of 69 million. The town was estimated to receive 1.3 million in fiscal year 2021, but only received 754,000. This is a shortfall of 573,000. For fiscal year 21, 22, there's a 56 million shortfall countywide and the Atherton portion is 348, 41,000. This can be found found on page four of the staff report. As of January 2022, the fiscal year 2021 shortfall of 96 million will be appropriated in the state 2020, 23 budget. Now that there's a similar shortfall in our current fiscal year, the county respective agencies will submit similar requests that the shortfall be appropriated in the state 23, 24 budget. So the total VLF shortfall to the town was 915,000. Some additional highlights in the staff report, the fiscal year 21, 22 ERAF budget was 1.1 million and the ERAF received to date is 2.279 million. It's an increase of 1.179 million for the fiscal year. Fiscal year 22, 23 ERAF is now estimated at 1.6 million. Even though this that town has seen increases in ERAF recently, staff still believe that down the line, the state could make additional changes to the calculation to reduce excess ERAF. These excess ERAF funds from 2016 to 2017 to 21, 22 are slated for the town center project. Based on council priorities, ERAF could be used to reduce liabilities, other long-term debt and on-time projects. Some other highlights, building revenue is projected to increase about 138,000 due to increase in permit revenue. There's an increase in miscellaneous revenues of 150,000, 715,000 at mid-year. This is due to an increase in fines for damages to heritage trees. These are onetime revenues and also all other town revenues remain static. There are three areas that necessitate an expenditure adjustment and require council level approval. The total is 110,000 in additional expenditure adjustments. Building department is 62,150 is is increases needed and that's due to the contract expenditures due to the revenue adjustments in the building revenue. Administration Department, there's an increased budget of 8,000. And that's due to expenditures for county district map boundaries and GIS shape files verification. And there's in also an interdepartmental budget, there's a 40,400 additional expenditures due to website update and enhancements for 14,000. That's that's total for 14,000 and also there's a extended cost of 26,400,000 for the administration trailers due to delay of the move to the new town center. Overall, the operating expenditures are within the budget expectation, but we maintain our council council and operational priorities. Total revenues project 20.56 million. This is inclusive of the 2.27 ERAF, two expenditures of 16.6 million. And this provides a net positive change in fund balance of 3.9 million. Projected 21, 22 year end fund balance is 17.6 million. And this includes 861,000 for debt service for the C O P. And also includes the transfers out of general fund unallocated reserves of 3.5 million to the town center. These are on pages eight and nine of the staff report. Minus the reserves, the total available unallocated reserve for the project is 10,071,000. And this is also provided on page nine of your staff report. And it's a snapshot, the remainder of the project construction and contributions from the general fund toward the project completion. So total remaining estimated construction costs for the town center are 3.5 million. The total remaining construction estimated cost, resultant projected fiscal year 21, 22 unallocated fund balance is six foot, 6.5, 6.6 million. There's a snapshot for the fiscal year 21, 22 unallocated fund balance. And that's the 6.5 million, 6.6 million, sorry. And the final completion of the project is estimated to be in March 2022. Staff wants also highlight within the staff report, there's ARPA funding. The town received 1.0 million from the American Rescue Plan. Initial portion of 856, 53,000 was received in July 2021. And the remainder will arrive in in June 2022. And these funds may be used to respond to the public health emergencies with respect to COVID that are very fairly broad in their application. Staff will work on providing recommendations for council confederation coming months for the use of town of Atherton ARPA allocation. Staff also provided use several uses of ARPA funds within the staff report. But also in addition to direct direct revenue loss, the ARPA funds may be used to utilize the offset of costs for COVID-related construction delay to the town center project. This concludes my staff report. A budget resolution will be included as part of the February 16 consent agenda. Open to any question.
Great, I've got a question from Bob.
Regarding the the VLF revenues, that chart that you have on page four, are you telling me that that going into this fiscal year, when you prepared the original budget, you had a million 403, 722 in the budget? And now you so it was in the budget originally, so the the change in the I'm sorry. The change in the property.
In the budget was not. Go ahead, sorry about that.
What I'm getting at is that the that VLF in Lou is included in the property tax number in in other places in this report. So if we had a shortfall of 341, 984 against your original budget, the 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 increase in property taxes overall, which I think was 533, the other, the regular property taxes more than made up for the 341 shortfall, if if I understand it correctly.
Correct, but and and I'm going to clarify that our budget for the in Lou VLF was 949,000. What we had budgeted, but with the state's calculations, their estimate for the VLF amount that's due to the town is for this fiscal year is 1.4 million. And but the funds available to us right now is 1,61,000. 41,000 increase is to the 900,000.
Yeah, I I got you. So so what you budgeted has not nothing to do with the actual calculation shown on this because you you don't have that information at the time you budget. Okay, I could have gone and dug out my budget book.
Sorry, I I have a follow-on question to that, which deals with the property transfer tax on on the same table that that information is, can you tell us exactly what the property transfer tax is? And that looks like it went up more substantially than anything else as a percentage.
Yeah, on page three. On page three, the property transfer tax, that's a actual document transfer tax that that for when when the seller of property occurs, there is a an allotment of a percentage per thousand that is charged for the transfer of the documents and the property. And so that's separate from the property transfer tax that's out there. This is just the document transfer tax. And we could, it's point 053 per thousand value of property that we get. So we had budgeted 543,000. Last year, we received 743,000 in property transfer tax. And it looks like this year it's going to be similar to that. And and again, this is just related on on the sale of properties. And that's why it's coming in higher than what we budgeted. We initially budgeted 543, we 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 budgeted less this year. We weren't going to have the same amount.
So so the miss there is we underestimated the value of the property that would be transferred. Is that right?
Yes, the amount, correct, correct.
Okay. Bob, do you have another question?
No, I'm going to lower my hand now. Thank you.
So I I have another question or two. On page nine of 12, in the top table, where you show the the projected year-end balance and then the reserves, you include an exclusion for the American Rescue Plan Reserve, just like you do for the regular town 15 and 20% reserves. But we don't spend the 15 and 20% reserves, they're set aside. And we can spend the American Rescue Plan Reserve, correct? To me, it's not the same as a reserve. To me, it's money we can use, we just have to use it in the right way. But that's true with all kinds of other revenue that we receive, the gas tax we can only use in certain ways. There there are other tax taxes that are revenue that that we obtain that are that have some limitations as to what we can use them for. So I I don't know why we would not just consider that American Plan Rescue as sort of as revenue that granted that we have to use it for certain things, but.
I have a follow-on question to you about that, if I may, through the mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
So at the bottom, the ARPA funding paragraph, it says that we are going to receive 1.7 from the plan. The initial, we've already received 850,000, okay? And we're expecting the remainder by June of this year. We have not spent or have we spent the 853,000? Have we allocated that per the restrictions of the plan receipt?
Currently, we we have not. And staff will bring that to the council for consideration for for that.
That's my thought. So we're banking.
Yes, we're banking that. Thank you. No, no, and and that's what we were doing. And and Mayor, that that's also to to answer your question. The reason it was just, it was it was just basically parsed out because we need to identify what we're going to use that for. So that that's that was just my, just for allocation purposes, because the revenue was included. But just to making sure that net of that, that we're used to spend for whatever whatever we we allocate it for, that the remaining unallocated balance, that is used for the remaining, what what we need to contribute for the town center. And anything net of that is for council priorities interaction.
It's largely just to, because ARPA is restricted, nothing in the general fund is usually restricted. We can spend it on anything we like, but other than our reserves, those are restricted and ARPA money is restricted too. So we had to pull that out just to give you a true picture of what unrestricted revenue is in the general fund.
But gas taxes are restricted.
It's not general fund money, though. This is only general fund.
I see. Okay. Well, okay, so let me, does anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, I have one last.
I'm going to go to comments, but go ahead, Bob.
One last question, because it's a kind of a big number. This Bayfront Canal, where, as I understand it, we basically were loaned a million 350 from the county, which which works, which we will be repaying. What's the amortization schedule or the agreement we have regarding repayment?
It's a five-year repayment plan and it's 148,000 in semi-annual payments.
Taken out of our property tax.
They just take it out of our property tax.
Taken out of our property tax.
They just don't give us those property taxes.
Oh, so it's it's going to, it's going to affect our property tax revenue. But we won't see it as an expense item or a debt, you know, repayment of debt on our on our accountings. Okay.
Our property tax revenues keeps going up pretty nicely. It seemed like a good deal.
There's effectively no interest, I think, or it's it's, you know, very, very low.
It was the going rate at the time, which was about 2%, 2.1%. Similar to our our C O P, 2.7.
So it's 148 K twice a year? Thank you. First withdrawals in April, correct, Robert?
April this year is the first withdrawal. And we already received the money and we've already basically paid for our portion of the project with it.
Okay, let me see if there's any public comment on this issue. I don't see any public comment. If anyone has a public comment, they can click on reactions at the bottom of the page and raise your hand. Okay, so let's bring it back to council comments. Well, I I'll make one comment, which is I think we should spend this American Rescue Plan money to the extent that we can. There's no reason to hold it in reserve. It's no benefit to us to hold it in reserve. And if I understand it, we can, there there's a very good description on page 10 of what we can use the ARPA funds for. Certainly, there's some loss of of revenue from the park. I I don't think it's very material, but there is some loss there. But more important, there's spending on government services, building maintenance and other infrastructure. I'm sure that that there's expense on the town center that we could use some of that money for.
Yeah, I think that it's important, Rick, that we we wait and find out what the change order is on the delay. So that's, you know, the money is going to go, a lot of that would go to that. And 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 then from there, we'll see how much left, you know, to cover the expenses that George had when the staff had to get home, home offices and stuff like that. And I I agree with you, there's some money that could go to the park, et cetera, but we'll have to see.
I think the strategy, though, in talking to George, it was like, you know, it's going to be in June, we'll get the rest of it. And then, because once we tally up the the construction costs that we can allocate, it may be more than the 1.7 or, you know. So, you know, we we need to yeah, have all that and then throw the money at it. I think it's nice, I mean.
And we want to get a complete picture.
And we want to get a complete picture of of what our expenditures are, and then we can prioritize where to and strategize where to spend them.
I had a question about funding sources, you know, at the bottom of page ten, the current funding sources for streets and bike ped improvements or portions of the remaining parcel tax. Do we, off the top of your head, do we know how much we have left in that fund, the parcel tax fund? Is it like ninety thousand or?
About one point. No, it's probably like one point one million still um that we have remaining on that.
Gosh, you know, that's wonderful.
Yeah, and and it is. It is. And and we're still restricted on the use. Um, you know, it was for streets and drainage and for police services. So we're we're trying to, as we kind of had a delay in in capital projects.
Yeah.
Um, in the CIP, um, the parcel tax is probably one that that we can use. We we were holding off so we can use it whether it was on drainage or major street projects. Um, you know, as we start to ramp back up into our CIP.
I think some streets need some attention. I could use a stripe at my stop sign.
Oh, dude.
Here as well.
Hey, George, I think we could have a painting party over at Elizabeth's house.
Uh, are there any other comments on the midterm budget?
There's a lot of numbers here, Robert, too.
Thanks, Robert. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I think we need a motion. This is an action item.
The review and file.
Receive and file.
Oh, it's receiving file, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the action item will come before the council at its February meeting with the resolution for the expenditure addition.
I see. Okay, very good.
Good progress, isn't it? It's pretty good.
Okay.
Yes.
And
Thank you.
So let's move on to item number five. Uh, which is a report on the Atherton Disaster and Preparedness Community Communications Drill. The the ADAPT Communications Drill.
Live from Telemundo, this will go to the chief of police.
Yes, I've been busy the last couple of days. I have a, I had a uh signature signing party in the lobby today. So yeah, I'm very busy. But good evening, everybody. I'm just gonna give you a brief report, and as usual, I'd love to take your questions and get the conversation going. On November geez, November twentieth, we held, it was actually the first ever ADAPT Communications Drill. And we think we had about twenty participants in the police department, and the goal of the whole drill was to see if we could connect the Orange Operations Center to the fourteen ADAPT areas throughout town. With the idea being that we have an area coordinator for each area, block captains within those areas for communications back to the EOC in the event of emergency. Because as we all know, communications is probably the most prevalent criticism after any large scale emergency. So we wanted to exercise the capability from the EOC to communicate out to our residents and back. We did that with a combination of ham radios, cell phone, walkers and runners, because in the event, if you got to get a message somewhere, you can always send a walker or a runner. We had to simulate some of the sites because we didn't have enough uh, participants and enough ham radio people, but that's that's real life. That's what's going to happen if something happens tomorrow. We're going to have to work with what we have. Uh, but I think what the drill demonstrated is our ADAPT folks first, very committed, very experienced. Uh, they're able to show that they do have the capabilities and the professionalism to assist us in the event of an emergency. They this, they activated their net control, uh, which I had not seen before. I was very impressed with their ability to track all the requests coming in from each of the areas, uh, because it's important for us when this emergency happens, there's only going to be so many resources to go around, and we have to start prioritizing this. And as a result of the uh, the drill, we did an after action report. And we had several recommendations that I'm sure you reviewed in our report. I won't go through them all in detail, but primarily we needed more radio communication cover, more reliability, more ham radio operators, uh, maybe an alternative to the family radio system, which is a general mobile radio service. It's a kind of a high end family radio which allows a signal to be repeated. Uh, if we had a repeater, that might be a good way to establish communication, uh, primarily amongst neighborhoods and back to the EOC. I think there was a question, you know, can we just buy ham radios and provide them out to all adapters? It's a little more complicated than that. There's a, there's a class, there's a license. It does require some experience. So I think the way to go is is to ensure communications going forward. We will make sure that an ADAPT licensed ham radio lead operator will be at the EOC when it's activated. They will be in charge of communication with the other adapters, the other areas and the block captains. And to do that, we need to probably a good idea if we can solidify that general mobile radio, GMRS, are a viable alternative. They're about fifty dollars, and I think that would be not too large a fiscal impact to provide those two adapters at the very least. Make sure that the area coordinator and the block captains have them so they can easily communicate in their area. Cell phone is still a good option. I know I'm talking with, as we researched some of this in the after action, the cell phone providers have continued to harden their sites. And for the police department, we are first net users, meaning we would have priority. So I'm a little more comfortable that cell phones more likely than not will be available, but we can't rely on that. So we need to continue with increased radio uh, equipment, ham radio capability uh, increase. And also, we're looking at a new technology. It's not new, but there is a new technology called Bear Tooth, not Bluetooth, but allows you to use your cell phone with another Bear Tooth participant, and you can actually text uh, and email within several mile range. And so that might be another good alternative for us to have. Going forward, uh, the Communications Drill is now going to be held at least annually. It'll probably be held in July or August as we lead up to the September Community Drill, which will give us two great opportunities to continue to exercise the communication capabilities. And I recently met with uh, Tom Owen, who I see on the meeting tonight, our new ADAPT president and the board. Uh, they would actually like to see more than just once a year, and I I totally encourage that. Uh, and encourage working on ham radio capability and just continuing to exercise everything that we need to do so that we're all operating on the same level during an emergency.
Okay, great. Thank you, chief. Uh, questions? I have one from Bill.
No, not a question. It's a comment.
Okay. Uh, are you, okay, a couple of comments and no questions? Uh, let me just see if there's any public comment on this. Is there any public comment?
I don't see any, mayor.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, so yeah, I strongly support you know, buying a couple radios for each area. You know, there are some areas that don't even have an area coordinator. And and I agree with your comment about the uh, you know, the block coordinators as well. Now, there should be one extra one, because when you send out a runner, you want to be in contact with them, and some of the areas are fairly large. And so, you know, I think that you want to have one that you would check in and out to the runner going out on uh, you know, on assignment to go look at the structural buildings or, you know, respond to, you know, somebody saying that there's, you know, been an accident or something like that. So I do think it's it's important that, you know, that the town, you know, acquire these and distribute them. I think that um, if we would go the ham radio, which I wouldn't have a problem with, that, you know, I think that the town could arrange. There just was one up in Redwood City, uh, you know, a training class where you sit in the class for the good part of a day and and at the end, there's a test and you get certified. But uh, you know, I'll go with your recommendation, chief. Um, I think it's a good one, but I I do think that the town should make the investment in the radios the same as we make the investment in other equipment for for the emergency services.
Thanks. Uh, okay, Diana.
Yeah, I participated in that drill and uh, the the walkie talkies did not reach. A lot of them didn't reach. I'm thrilled to see that you're looking at all other alternatives. You mentioned this um, Bear Tooth. Is that the same as Go Antenna? I see Matt Baker's on the line here. Some of the residents in my area did a test with a Go Antenna, which is another one of these new technologies that um, allow you to repeat messages and record messages. So I'm guessing that's the same as your Bear Technology. Sounds similar. I would like to see us test both of that. The reason being is that we have a lot of trees in our town. And the um, the ham radios didn't work. They didn't even work when we were in the emergency drill in the park. I was sitting at a stand with, you know, the walkie talkies and we were, you know, very, we were on the other side of the building of the actual communication center, and we couldn't receive the messages. So it's in our town, it's a, it's a problem, and I'm thrilled that the communication test was done. And I look forward to taking to the next level where we test the next step up of, you know, the higher end walkie talkies, but also maybe looking at some of the next generation technologies, because they are not necessarily more expensive, but they're much easier to operate and they store messages. So if I happen to not be there when I leave a message, I can get it later. And as far as the ham radio goes, um, I think that that is a dying breed and it's a very specific kind of person. And if you go to our meetings, it's they're, they skew really old right now. And I'm not sure we're going to get a lot of ham volunteers. So um, as long as we have it, yay, great, let's keep it. But we should be looking at some of the newer technologies that are easier for residents to use and don't require you to take a class and all that.
And just, just one comment back on that. So the the Bear Tooth is similar to the antenna, but it has longer range, which was our, which made us kind of interested in tracking that. And I don't remember the exact price, but it wasn't cost prohibitive. So we'll certainly pursue that. Also, too, one thing I forgot to mention in Sammentail County, uh, there's a ham organi- ham radio organization that's extremely well organized. They have resources and assets. Several of the participants during the drill were part of this community. And yes, they are. It is kind of a unique group of people that like to do ham radios. Um, they're very good at what they do. And like anything else, if we needed to call for backup or resources, uh, we have the capability to do that. It would just be dependent if they were needed countywide.
Okay, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Uh, so my comments are that I think that this drill, I I was there throughout the drill and witnessed it all. And the people were so dedicated to really creating a real time, real life type of an emergency. And they were specific about, you know, getting the calls and logging them in and uh, getting the message out and everything. And if you look at the attachments that the chief has provided in our packet, uh, it's quite detailed. And so the dedication of the ADAPT, ADAPT uh, community um, is just, you know, stellar. We need more. Uh, we need more people, obviously, uh, to cover our town and uh, to transmit it. I don't know about the ham radio. I can't imagine myself using one and learning the technology or whatever. Uh, I I was questioning, why couldn't we just use our cell phones? Because it seems like cell phones seem but I don't know that. So, you know, there's got to be. I agree with council member Hawkins May Wollian, who says that maybe we need to really look harder into the um, new technology that's out there. But uh, kudos to you, chief, for putting this together and for Tom Owens and, you know, I I know that um, Tom Pussing was there in the command center, you know, the whole time, uh, leading the the charge. So hopefully, uh, the next one uh, will be um manned by, I guess, um, Tom, who's taking that over and, you know, other volunteers. So um, let's just keep doing it and bring the people out to volunteer.
Great.
Okay, and I will tell you, you know, it's a good, does serve as a great example. These ADAPT folks, we are really lucky to have this group as robust as they are and as trained and professional as they are, and it's great to have uh, that backup. One underlying component and message from this drill is another stark reminder that our residents have to be ready to take care of themselves and take care of themselves within a, within a block and in the area, because quite frankly, we're not going to be able to respond like we would like. We will eventually, but it really is incumbent upon the residents to make sure they're taking care of themselves.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, good. Bill?
Yeah, so so I I too was at the session, um, you know, in the command center with Elizabeth. Um, and I and I do think that uh, you know, the the drill went very, very well. Um, but, you know, I think as we set up our final tower, uh, you know, and we strengthened it, I I believe that we can overcome the tree issue, but right now, the line of sight phones are going to, you know, are not going to work. And secondly, the um, you know, the cell towers, with one of the things that we've been saying at all the ADAPT meetings since the beginning, is that the cell towers are going to be knocked down as well. So they they probably will not be working. So we need to just be prepared for that and make sure that as we're doing the evaluation with ADAPT and Tom, that we we make sure that we get something that's going to work in our environment, but but secondly, uh, you know, not rely on cell phones, because it, you know, they may not be available to us.
Nice. Diana?
Yeah, I just want to say I really like the part of the report suggesting that we bundle stuff and provide it on a loan basis to the assembly points. And I think right now, some of our assembly points are not manned, and I think that with the we're at a really interesting opportunity where our emergency center is coming online, and I think we should take a, you know, whole close look at the whole assembly points as they stand, try to actively recruit people in them and provide a package like you proposed in uh, in that proposal, being able to give them some number of whatever it is we agree on as the standard communication devices. So I think this is a really exciting time to start over and to do some of that, especially as we get our whole emergency center online.
Well, just to add on to that, uh, and I know that George has thought about this, but uh, as our EOC gets online and the council chambers is functional, uh, we need to do another comprehensive drill like we did several years ago at the old EOC. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of change and uh, and and I think ADAPT has has improved and grown since then. Uh, because it's really subsequent to that, that Tom ran ADAPT and um, you know, ADAPT is just residents. I mean, it, yes, we have great residents, but they they've been well organized. They've been organized and focused around how to respond to disaster. That that is a uh, just a fabulous benefit to the community that the leadership has provided from ADAPT and um, and and of course, there's always room for improvement, but I mean, we're really strong when you look at other communities. So I think we do need that EOC drill. Uh, one, once that center is opened, uh, and to redo what we had done several years ago, which I thought that must have been twenty four, no, twenty fourteen, I think, when we did it. So it was quite a while ago.
Right, in the
But it it was really substantial, and and I think all of us that participated were impressed at the roles that each of us had and that others had.
Good.
Okay, is your hand up, Diana?
Yes, it is. There's, there's a couple other things I I wanted to share with this group is that um, I think that it would be really useful if if, as we get up to doing that that test, that we reach out to the community again to try to fill the assembly points that are missing, and we can do that through the Athertonian or some other form of, I'll use some of our vehicles for outreach to do that. Because uh, I think we need to coordinate a lot more with them and provide a little more support in terms of getting the word out to get to the next level. And I see Tom's here, and I'm wondering if he's got anything to say.
Uh, yeah, I'd love to chime in. So mayor and council, you know, I I too am very proud of ADAPT, and I'm proud of the communication drill. And as the chief police said, I'm interested in doing them fairly often. I I think we have a plan where we can uh, make it very simple and also make it very realistic, and those two things, you know, go together. Um, I'm encouraged and I'd be more than happy to to sit down with, you know, anyone in this group and talk about um, some of the technologies and and what exists today and what's new. There's a a very interesting infrastructure already in place of ham radio enthusiasts that can, you know, deploy at a moment's notice. And I and I would agree with council member Whitmer, those shouldn't be overlooked. Um, but, you know, also physics is a reality, and whether it's the nine hundred megahertz frequency as in the Bear Tooth or you know, that one forty seven with the the ham, the
the the trees and and, you know, some of these things are gonna have a problem. So it has to do with wattage and all that. So point of all that is, I'm more than happy to sit down, we can kind of clearly define the objectives, what we want to do, and then come up with a plan on how we want to get there utilizing EAPs and what their role would be and so on and so forth. So I'm I'm wonderfully encouraged uh by my role as president and what we can do as a, as a group with the, with the town.
Okay, Diana?
I have one last question, sorry I keep talking here. But uh is there a pocket of money that exists somewhere that can support this effort? That would be, as as mentioned in the report, there's some action items there. One is make, coming up with a communication package that's literally provided as a checkout basis. All right, do we have a source of funding for that? Do we have to look for grants? Do we have to go to our other partners, the Fire Department? How do we, how do we get the money to do this? Is there any ideas out out there on that?
We should go to the Fire Department.
Yeah, I vote for that. The the town does provide a a small budget within the police department's budget in support of ADAPT. And historically, the Fire District has provided some funding, although getting uh some of that funding out of the Fire Department has been a little more challenging over the years. Um but I agree, I think we should partner up with both agencies, the town and the district, and support of these initiatives.
Yeah, the Fire Department, you know, funds, the Fire Department funds the activity. Uh they do have like a granting agency, and they've been giving grants to Menlo Park. And so I I don't know why Atherton, when we've gone over and talked to them about it, why we haven't gotten anything.
I think the timing is good. I haven't met the new Fire Chief, of course I plan to, and this will be one of the main topics of conversation. And I know they just had a study done on their program for CERT and for groups like ADAPT. And I I think definitely it would be a great way for them, you know, building on relations and everything else. And there's a tangible outcome by providing income for us, additional trailers, et cetera. So I will definitely have that conversation with the new Fire Chief.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. I think that's the end.
Is that a wrap? I think that's a wrap. What do you think?
That's a motion. The wrap is on its way.
I think it's a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to see everyone and the members of public, Mr. Brickley.